Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Wake County Virtual Candidate Forum for the Board of Education. The League is proud to support voter education and to continue our long history of hosting candidate forums. The Wake County Board of Education is a local governing body of the Wake County Public School System. It is the largest school district in North Carolina and the fifteenth largest in the United States. It serves a very diverse student body and has improved its graduation rate so that almost ninety percent of high school students graduate from high school. Its nine members are currently elected from seven separate county districts. Each member represents that district within the entire board and is elected by residents of that district. All candidates are nonpartisan, meaning they are not running as representatives of a political party. The school board sets policy for the school system implemented by the superintendent and administrative staff. The board also adopts an annual budget proposal that includes its request for local funding from the Wake County Board of Commissioners as well as its plan for using state and federal funds. The school board does not have taxing authority. Today, we welcome candidates for District Eight, Steve Bergstrom and Lindsay Mahaffey. District Eight is in the southwest corner of Wake County encompassing parts of Cary, Apex, Holly Springs, New Hope, and Fuquay Varina. Both candidates live in District Eight. Today, we have Steve Bergstrom and Lindsay Mahaffey. Welcome, Steve and Lindsay. Thank you for joining us today. We will ask every candidate for the Board of Education the same questions. The questions will cover a range of issues relevant to the scope of the board. I'd like to verify with you that neither of you has received these questions in advance.
Thank you, Barry. That is correct.
You may now have two minutes for an introductory statement. Steve, you may go first.
Well, thank you for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Steve Bergstrom. I am running for school board primarily because I'm a father of four. I'm the oldest of seven. I've got twenty-two nieces and nephews, all of whom have gone through the public school system. So I am a big proponent of the public school system. I think my motivation for running is to make Wake County Public Schools the number one option for all parents as far as their choice on where they want to send their kids to prepare for life. I am a veteran of the United States Air Force. I spent twelve years in the Air Force, six of which was down in Pope Air Force Base in Fayetteville, North Carolina. My wife is from Wilson, North Carolina. I moved around the country, but I have really loved calling Raleigh home. I'm an airline pilot now. I fly for a major airline. And I'm just excited about this opportunity to run and talk to you about my goals for the coming school years.
Thank you. Lindsay, you're up next.
Thank you, and hello, everyone. My name is Lindsay Mahaffey, and I am currently serving on the Wake County Board of Education. I was first elected in 2016 and have been re-elected since in 2018. I have three young daughters, all of whom started kindergarten in Wake County Public Schools and are currently enrolled in an elementary school today, although that school looks a little different these days. My background is teaching. I love being in the classroom. I love teaching and reaching students and meeting them where they are. And I have a big focus on social and emotional learning, making sure that our students' needs are taken care of in the classroom. My background is, I have a master's degree in teaching. And as a parent of Wake County students and a mother and a teacher, I bring that experience to the boardroom and I make sure that my work at the board table is grounded in that experience and what I'm hearing from our families and members of our community as well as our teachers and students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move to the question part of the forum. The first question, beyond the technology funding that CARES Act has already provided, what policies, procedures, and strategies would you implement to improve equity across students to close achievement gaps that have a harmful effect on children of color, economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, and English language learners? Lindsay, you may go first.
Sure. This pandemic has certainly made us more aware of the inequities in our district when it comes to the backgrounds and the different life experiences our students have. We have used CARES Act money to provide technology and hotspots, but we also need to make sure that our teachers understand where our students are coming from. And that's part of that social and emotional learning. And our Office of Student Support Services has done a lot of work making sure that we can support our teachers as they support our students in this new learning environment and when they return back to the classroom. Thanks to our county commissioners, we have been able to add more counselors and social workers to our roster. We're very grateful for that. We have, since my time, a little before my time on the board, increased the number of nurses that we have so that we're at a two-to-one ratio, so two schools for every one nurse. I would love to get to a one-to-one ratio. We also have the opportunity of teachers reaching out for equity resources in order to learn more about their students. We talk about making sure that our students have mirrors and windows so that they can see themselves reflected in our curriculum and also see other life experiences reflected in our curriculum as well.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay, so when we're talking about funding, I guess I come from a, you know, John Adams always said that facts are stubborn things. I like to attack things just with the facts of the issues. So as far as you mentioned minorities, sixty-three percent of all fourth graders and sixty-eight percent of all eighth graders are not proficient according to NAEP standards in the math and English proficiency levels. When you talk about minorities, specifically the African-American community, those students are only proficient at a twelve percent level right now. The real issue that I think is not focused on enough is the science of learning, really the the ability to talk about and implement changes in early language proficiency for minority students especially. We talked about, you mentioned graduation rates at the beginning. I understand that we're, we've got very high numbers of graduation rates, but thirty-seven percent of all the students that graduate do not meet the minimum ACT benchmark requirements for UNC graduate schools. A score of seventeen is needed even to enter those universities. Thirty-seven percent of all students don't even reach those benchmarks. We have to start diverting the funds and the resources to handling those problems rather than using the funds for issues that do not address that problem. The OEA has spent six million dollars over the last six years. That is their budget over the last six years, six million dollars. And their charge is to address these inequities among minorities, but also for special needs students. There's a cap right now on the amount of money that special needs students can receive. That's twelve percent. Twelve percent per student population is the amount that we're able to receive. However, we know that in these large population areas, this is where parents of student needs move because they have the resources here. So we need to transition to something.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Oh, oh, you don't, okay.
Finish your thought. You can go ahead.
Well, we need to transition to away from an allotment funding program that we use at the state level to more of a weighted student foundational program that other states use to be able to give these allotments and these resources to these special needs students which are being totally ignored. Seventy-five percent of parents in Wake County have already polled and said that special needs students are not receiving the resources.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to move on to the second question. School systems across the state and country are struggling to develop educational plans in response to the ever-changing nature of the pandemic. Do you expect the post-pandemic school system to be less dependent on physical structures and staff and to be, and still be able to serve students well? Okay, Steve, you may go first.
Well, I mean, you know, to be honest, the school board, in my mind, and in a lot of parents' minds, has not shown the flexibility or the adaptability to manage these type of situations. When the pandemic came up back in March or April, you know, as growing up in the Air Force, you learn leadership traits. You are trained in those leadership skills. Part of being a leader is having plans and preparations, even if it's a bare basic plan in place. There was nothing in place despite the fact that we, we have all kinds of hurricanes, natural disasters that happen in North Carolina. Every once in a while, there was no plan put in place to be able to quickly transition over to something that could handle this pandemic. Instead, you know, you have board members like Bill Fletcher going out there and saying that, that, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, but that we need to exercise patience. Well, we've given patience. We've given five months to be able to transition to new means and ways to answer the call for this. And on the first day when the system crashes and students aren't able to log in, it brings into question the ability of the school board really, and I understand that the school board can't handle all these problems. Like, I'm not putting this on every school board member, but it has been the inability to plan and prepare from day one for these type of issues that makes me question whether or not, or exactly what the picture is going to look like because of lack of leadership and planning preparation. But I don't think that the way we're seeing schools right now, to answer your question, is the way that we're going to see it in the future. I just feel like this is, doing everything virtual is harmful to kids and is not meeting their needs right now.
All right, thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you. Um, virtual school is something that we're doing in response to a pandemic, and this is an unprecedented time. We are not a Fortune 500 company. We have been running underfunded by our state for, since the last recession. We have one hundred and sixty-four thousand students and around ten thousand teachers that we've had to turn around, and they have done an amazing job. We received the governor's and NCD HHS's mandate to have three plans. So we say that this started back in March, and we had ways to start and look and see what, what everything was going to look like. But we really didn't know what we had to plan for until we received our directive from the state, and that came on June eighth. And since that came, we've had to make changes as they've updated their guidance, and it's been updated three different times. As far as not being able to log in, that was part of the Power School update, and that was a state issue. But I agree that we need to make sure that we are planned, and that's why we have this two-week orientation period, which is a time for our students to learn how to use their Google meets, their Google classrooms, time for their teachers to learn who the students are, because it's very different learning and speaking to each other through a screen than in a physical environment. And we want to bring our students back into our buildings because it is the best way for them to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question. Racial inequity and the often resulting school-to-prison pipeline has been a longstanding problem in our schools, and there have been many strategies to address it. The presence of law enforcement in the schools has become a recent flashpoint, at least pre-pandemic. Do you think it's time to reevaluate the use of school resource officers in the public schools? Do you have any recommendations? Lindsay, you may go first.
Yes, of course. With recent events that have been going on with the killing of George Floyd and other African-Americans in the hand of law enforcement, this certainly has been something that has become more and more at the forefront of what we're hearing on the board. And we always had students, particularly students of color, who would say that they feel uncomfortable in our buildings with our school resource officers, with a law enforcement officer in the building. And I will fully admit, I did not grow up with a law enforcement officer in the building. I was a junior in high school when Columbine happened, and so we did not have police officers unless they were our dare officers. I would like to see more bridge building happening, whether it's through a curriculum or whether it's through the introduction of peace builders who are trained at conflict resolution so that if a fight breaks out between two students, we can deal with it with a trained adult then and there. We still need more counselors and social workers in our buildings. We are not close to the national average. We are working on it again, thanks to funding from our commissioners. And, you know, we have wonderful people in our buildings that are serving in this role. And, but we do need to find ways to have and take a look at that role, and our community has been asking for that. They've been asking for input in our memorandum of understanding with law enforcement. And we are taking the time this year to have that conversation with both law enforcement officers and with members of our community. And I hope that we can meet in the middle and have a great conversation and get some results. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. All right, Steve?
Well, back in February of 2019, a commission that was, or a poll that was commissioned by Governor Cooper asked teachers what their opinion of SROs was, and this was obviously following the Florida situation or the Florida massacre down there and that terrible situation. And so as a part of that, that poll of teachers by Governor Cooper, eighty-eight percent of teachers said that they wanted or had a strong opinion about having at least two SROs in the schools. So I don't know how teacher's opinion has changed this much. I don't believe it has over the last year. I think this is a reactionary thing, and I think it is again motivated by agendas. I don't think it's based in reality for us to get rid of SROs. SROs are a valuable resource. Do we need continued training? Yes. Do we need to make sure that they understand their proper role within the schools? Absolutely. But to completely get rid of SROs after just a year ago, only ten percent or twelve percent of teachers are saying that we don't want them. Eighty-eight percent are saying that we do need at least two in the schools. I think that's just reactionary and, and you know, we can't continue to be reactionary on all these decisions that we make within the school board, whether it's reassignment or budgetary decisions, MVP math, SROs, that we just cannot continue to be reactionary in our decision-making policies.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, the next question. Parents in Wake County have many options for educating their children. Should the Wake County Public School System and the leadership of the school board choose to coexist within these options? Or should they focus on creating a public school system that is equally attractive and actually preferred for all students and all families in Wake County? Steve, you may go first.
Well, you know, the, the school board has no purview over the proliferation of charter schools or private schools or any, anything of that. Our focuses and my focus would be solely on making the public school system the number one option for all parents to choose. There are resources that are available to our students that I feel are being very underutilized right now, whether it's the CTE programs, the College Career Promise Program, early college high school, which I believe offers transportation, free transportation to students in that situation. I mean, if you consider the fact that if you do the early college high school program, you graduate with a two-year degree, you can go to someplace like Western Governors University, and in eighteen months, you can receive a four-year degree on ten thousand dollars. And if you major in something like cybersecurity, then a starting salary for somebody in cybersecurity with a four-year degree is ninety thousand dollars a year. And yet, we aren't utilizing these programs to address these issues. You know, when we talk about minorities and trying to improve this situation, you know, of all the big tech firms in all of the United States, of all of their employees, only four percent are African-American. Why are we not taking advantage of this situation? Why are not, why are we not addressing early literacy instruction and trying to bridge the gap here, not by trying to bus people around from one location to another to mask our numbers and make them look better, but to actually address the problem and utilize the resources that we have? I think there needs to be a fundamental shift in how we address these issues than what's been going on over the last six to eight years.
All right, thank you, Steve. Lindsay?
Thank you. We want Wake County Public Schools to be the first choice and best choice for all families. We are the largest school district in our state, the sixteenth largest in the country. We offer a myriad of opportunities from our magnet schools, which are voluntary, you know, going a further distance for a program in order to have more socioeconomic diversity within a school. And that can range from leadership to gifts and talents to a myriad of other choices based in environmental connections or other sciences. Our, our career and technical education program is amazing. We have a hundred percent graduation rate for any student who has a CTE concentrator. And that's having more than four courses within a CTE subject area. We also offer our early colleges and leadership academies where you can get a college degree or college courses, rather, and dual enrollment opportunities exist with Wake Tech. We also have to look at our building program because we are a school district that is very large with over a hundred and ninety buildings. Some of them as new as a year. And South Lake Solomentary is opening this year, brand new. Others have been left without any major renovations for much, much longer. And so we have to look at our buildings in terms of equity. We want people to see our schools as warm, inviting places. And sometimes we just need a little spruce within our buildings. I've worked at a private school. They have dedicated staff for admissions. When someone comes in and says, hey, how are you? You can find that at a magnet school with a magnet coordinator, but your regular school, if you walk in, you're going to find a receptionist who's also having to put bandages on and working hard and, you know, a principal dealing with other things. And so we really need to make sure that we have the personnel in place to support our students. And again, that looks like, you know, having a school nurse in every building so that we can have even more welcoming places as parents to our schools.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, okay, this is going to be our last question. Do you support ongoing efforts to adjust the curriculum to reflect current concerns facing our community? Recently, there has been the addition of a financial literacy component within high school social studies. Other groups would like to see the addition of a civics government program or content on systemic racism introduced into the coursework. How should the school board address those concerns? And Lindsay, you may go first.
Sure. Um, well, the financial literacy came from the North Carolina General Assembly. As a public school system, we have a certain standard course of study that we have to follow. And so at the high school level, that's going to look consistent of those core classes that you're going to be seeing in, in our district and throughout North Carolina. The curriculum, the way, the materials we use in order to teach that have to meet those standards. Any other courses that we'd like to do would be part of an extracurricular. So we have schools that do African-American studies, sculpting, dance, all parts of what we can offer in our comprehensive high schools. As far as curriculum, as curriculum is done, we have our academic staff and our curriculum staff look over what curriculums fit the standard course of study as required by North Carolina, making sure it hits all of those standards. We then have these reviewed by teachers and shopped and piloted. And I remember going to a program for our middle school math that was open to parents, for parents to give their input. And so there were many opportunities over the district to do that, and then staff presented what they feel is the best option. And it's the school board's decision to accept that option. It's not our, our decision to review all of the options. We have to trust the staff that we have. Now, we've recently, I would say, our implementation of some of those has gone a little fast, and we have learned from that, and we are working on an English curriculum that is being developed by Wake County teachers. And we are building that runway slowly so that we can make sure that we have smooth implementation all around.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lindsay. Steve?
Well, my focus would absolutely be on providing an unbiased quality education for all students across the board. I feel like the school board has focused way too much on agendas rather than addressing those issues. So let me give you again, let me just reiterate a couple of stats. Thirty percent, thirty-seven percent of all students that graduate from Wake County do not meet basic benchmark university entrance standards. Sixty-eight percent of all eighth graders are not proficient, proficient in math and English standards. Twelve percent, only twelve percent of African-Americans are proficient in math and English standards. Seventy-five percent of the parents of special needs feel that the resources are underutilized, and they do not have the resources they need to address their problems. Fifty-seven percent of all the teachers say they lack the resources needed and the, and the professional development needed to perform their job. I would like to focus on these things. When we spent six million dollars over six years on the OEA to focus on social issues rather than focusing on the real issues that, that matter. When, and this is a poll that was just given by North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Sixty-five percent of all teachers polled said that there is not an issue with minority or, I forget what the, I forget what the number is, fifty, sixty-five percent of all teachers said there is not an issue with race in the classroom, I believe is what the poll asked about. There is this issue that we continue to throw money at and continue to try to address with funds rather than diverting the funds toward these areas that will really make a difference. Early literacy programs, focusing on the CTE programs, giving the teachers the, the needed resources and training to use these programs that are available to us. We are failing our teachers and we're failing our students by trying to focus and put six million dollars a year, fifteen million dollars to Duke that we just gave them today to get to look at all of our students' medical records, two million dollars on MVP math that we have wasted, six point two million dollars in the last two years on textbooks that parents are seeing. This is a mismanagement of funds, and we need to This is a mismanagement of funds, and we need to address these issues.
Thank you very much. Thank you to both candidates for coming today to participate in our virtual candidate forum. We recognize that running and serving an elected office is a considerable commitment of time, energy, and often sacrificed opportunities. The League, along with the residents of Wake County, is very grateful that we have so many capable fellow citizens who are willing to step forward to serve the important duties as members of the Wake County Board of Education. I'm now moving to closing statements, and you will have two minutes for that. Steve, please go ahead.
Well, listen, I, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve Wake County on the school board. I had no intention of running until the Friday before the filing date. And I had a lot of parents reach out to me who had been through various issues, whether it's multiple communities dealing with reassignment, parents who had been sued by MVP math, who were reaching out to me, talking about the problems with MVP math, issues dealing with mismanagement of funding that has, has continued to plague the school board over the last few years. I feel like there is an opportunity here to continue to build upon progress that has been latent in our school system lately. We need leadership on the school board. We need those who are willing to make the decisions that are going to focus on the areas that are going to help our students and give them the resources that they need to enter the workforce and the world as well-rounded students. And so to do so, I think we need real leaders on the school board. I understand what it is to be a leader. I also understand what it is to be a father. I have a senior in high school, a sophomore, a seventh grader, and I have a two-year-old. I know what parents are going through that are struggling right now and want some real leadership on the board, and, and I'm willing to step in and provide that. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve in any way that I can, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to talk to both of you today. I really enjoyed it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Lindsay?
Thank you, Marion, and thank you for hosting this forum. For you for moderating and to the League of Women Voters for making it available during these uncertain times. We need leadership that's consistent. We need leadership that has classroom experience, whose kids have been in this school district since the beginning. We need folks who understand that you cannot address Bloom's taxonomy until you've addressed Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And we have to focus on the fundamental needs of our students so that they feel safe and secure in our buildings and so they can thrive when they learn. We need to make sure and continue to advocate at the NCGA to make sure that funding continues to increase. We have not seen a budget this year. We are very grateful to our county commissioners for really plugging in a lot of those funding gaps that the state hasn't done and making sure that we could get our bus drivers up to fifteen dollars an hour where the state left school districts hanging while every other state agency was able to start at fifteen dollars an hour. We gave our classified staff a three percent raise this year, which they had not seen in a long time. And we have a commitment from our commissioners to continue to do that. We have a vibrant school system that reflects our community, and we need to make sure that everyone feels seen in it. And again, having someone during this time who has classroom experience, parental experience is quite necessary. And I reiterate that my name is Lindsay Mahappy, and I am asking for your vote in my reelection to the Board of Education and District Eight. My website is electlindsay.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lindsay. We close our forum now. Be sure to go to vote411.org to learn more about the candidates on your ballot and to learn the latest information on polling place hours and location. Thank you for joining us tonight.